Okay. So, yes, I'm going to tell you the reason. I'm going to have to take up my position. I'm busy board. You don't have to do anything. I'm like, what?
It's all recorded online. It's going to be online, yeah. You can access it there.
How do you propose you would like to do it? It's an open public meeting. If you wanted to record it, you could record it. It's being recorded right now and broadcast simultaneously online. So if you're inclined to pull out your phone, I mean, as long as it's not disruptive, it's an open public meeting, so you could record it if you wished.
I'll get a record.
Yeah, okay. You're welcome.
Are you on time?
Okay, want me to initiate this? Public hearing, welcome to the Town of Lockport Industrial Development Agency. There's a public hearing scheduled for this morning before the board takes on their regular business meeting. And I'll initiate the public hearing by reading the notice of the public hearing. It reads as follows. Notice of request and the consideration thereof of a project application submitted to Lockport Industrial Development Agency requesting financial assistance. Please take notice that the Town of Lockport Industrial Development Agency, the agency, will hold a public hearing on July thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, at eight o'clock a.m. at the Town of Lockport Town Hall Annex, six five six zero Disinger Road, Lockport, New York, to consider the following proposed financial assistance requested of the agency. SRI CV Plastics, Inc., the company, filed an application with the agency requesting that the agency consider undertaking a project, the project consisting of: A) The acquisition of approximately two acre parcel of land located at one thousand Enterprise Drive, Town of Lockport, New York, one four zero nine four, part of tax map, parcel number one zero eight point zero zero dash one dash fifty-six, the land; B) The construction of a new building on the land which will serve as a plastic production manufacturing facility primarily for the manufacture of PVC and disposable food containers used for food packaging, the improvement; C) The acquisition installation therein and thereon of related fixtures, machinery, equipment, and other tangible personal property collectively, the equipment, and together with the land, the improvement, the facility; and D) The lease to the agency and the lease back to the company of certain portions of the facility. The total cost of the portion of the project which the company is seeking financial assistance on is two million three hundred and forty thousand dollars. The agency will acquire an interest in the facility through a lease. The financial assistance contemplated by the agency will include mortgage tax abatement, sales tax exemption on any materials and/or equipment purchased for incorporation into the project, the real property tax abatement in accordance with existing agency uniform tax exemption policy and guidelines as amended. The exemption from general real property taxation with respect to the facility shall be offset in whole or in part by contractual payments in lieu of taxes, known as the pilot, by which the company, for the benefit of the affected tax jurisdictions. The company has requested a pilot agreement providing for a fifteen-year term which contemplates a payment of twenty percent of the general real property taxation for years one and two, thirty percent for years three and four, forty percent for years five through nine, and fifty percent for years ten through fifteen, for a total estimated net exemption of two hundred and twenty-seven thousand eight hundred and sixteen dollars over a fifteen-year term of the pilot agreement. The estimated value of the sales tax exemption is fifty-nine thousand forty dollars. The estimated value of the mortgage tax abatement is twenty-five thousand dollars. The project will be leased by the company or a related entity to the Town of Lockport Industrial Development Agency and leased back to the company or a related entity, which will be the occupant of the project. The agency and/or company will present information relative to the project and application at the hearing. Persons interested may attend and will be given an opportunity during the hearing to make statements. Also, written comments may be submitted to the agency at or before the hearing. Additional information can be obtained from and written comments may be addressed to Thomas Sai, Administrative Director, Town of Lockport Industrial Development Agency, Town of Lockport Town Hall Annex, six five six zero Disinger Road, Lockport, New York, one four zero nine four, phone number seven one six four three nine nine five three five, dated June twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, by order of the Town of Lockport Industrial Development Agency. So with that, Mr. Fergali, you are certainly open to open the public hearing, invite the applicant to present, and then proceed from there.
Yes, good morning, everyone. Welcome to the public hearing on CV Plastics. Just a reminder, speakers should stand if able, give your name and address. If everyone has signed in or hasn't signed in yet, please do so at this time. Only one person at a time may speak. All comments shall be directed only to the board. No back and forth with audience members will be allowed. Based on the size of the group, let's please keep your comments to four minutes or less. This is the board's opportunity to listen to your concerns and comments, not for you to engage in back and forth with the board. If you have questions, you may state them. If they choose, the board may address questions after the close of public comments. If abusive comments are made from the floor, or if any speaker uses inappropriate language or it becomes unruly, or personally attacks any person, you will be cut off and may be removed from the hall. At this time, I appreciate all the attendance, and if someone would like to step forward and...
You have the room to go first?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, go ahead. You're ready, Jerry?
Good morning. I'm the manager of three CV Plastics in India. Also, we have a group companies, it's a group companies in India owned by the family concerned of our father and mother. It started in nineteen eighty-nine, and so far we are producing four hundred tons of recycled plastics in India, producing industrial components especially for electronic coats and furnitures and food products. In two thousand twenty, we stepped into the global venture to start manufacturing the plastic outside India. We already established a plastic facility in Guyana with a production capacity of a hundred metric ton, and all the consumption is through ExxonMobil from Texas. We have a separate contract with ExxonMobil from Texas to procure a hundred metric ton. And we also have a contract with the recycling community from Caribbean to recycle the entire, it's not possible for to enter. We are recycling the plastics, and we use it to make a product for, especially for the repackaging of the food products, especially food and poultry and farming products. And now we have achieved around usage of a hundred metric tons per month of recycled plastics. So our motto of this, to start again, is our motto is very simple. It's reuse, recycle, and reuse. And one more step ahead, we want to use renewable energy from solar and wind. So that's our motto, that's why we are stepping into other different countries. Our target country is U.S., and Canada is much more developed on this sector, so we are not focusing on Canada. And in comparison with the market size, U.S., considering in New York, New York is importing around sixty percent from outside the country, especially ten percent comes from Canada. And rest of the thing comes from Turkey and Middle East. So we are familiar with the products or what they are supplying to U.S., so we want to produce inside the country and supply the market demand. And third one is our facility, what we are targeting here is to build a twenty-six square feet building into two phases, divided into two phases. First phase will be at thirteen thousand five hundred square feet, and second phase will be at thirteen thousand square feet. And this, the product will be fully focused on, not on disposable, it's specially focused on food packaging, especially, for example, to be in shot, you can see the tomatoes, base for everything packed, and if you go to the supermarket, it's all packed in a plastic container. And Western New York is primarily focused on the farming and dairy products. So we are targeting to supply our product to the milk dairy for making cheese, butter, and all the cups you see, it's all plastics. And especially, we want to supply to the agriculture sector, all the blueberries, the cut fruits, kiwis, and all the basil leaves, it's packed in an organic way, it's all comes from the plastic, it's packed in the plastic. You can't use in a carton or cardboard box, that goes into the freezer box. So that's primarily, there is no alternative to, for the packing, it's only the plastic. And moreover, all these products comes from, we want to focus only on recycle from PET. All the pet bottles has to be converted into the plastic container and reuse it for further use. And we are moreover primarily focused on using the recycled materials. So as you see, this in Europe, you need to be used only the recycle for packing of food products, that's already, the regulation has been passed in two thousand eleven in Europe, that has to be accommodated everywhere in Europe, and Australia, and Japan, and everywhere. But U.S. is still, but in Canada, it's implemented already. But we need to go through the regulation, we need to adapt the regulation, what is followed in U.S. So our primary focus is also the other states nearby, states like Pennsylvania, we have a demand for that because all the products comes from India after banning the plastic product from China, from India and Middle East, so many products is coming out of, so we will create jobs, we will create, we will create minimum twenty numbers of jobs, is a permanent job in next three years to five years, and there'll be temporary jobs that can, we have given in an application of five, but we will expect more than five. So the raw material, we are not using, we are not producing any raw material in the five facility, it's just the off-the-shelf, all the raw material is available off-the-shelf across U.S. Exxon, sale, farmers, everybody is producing the pellets. So it's all, already the pellets is virgin, we can use, it's dependent on the product and the specification of the consumer, right? We can use either recycled or the virgin plastic. It's the product manufacturer is stipulate this condition, so it's again based on the how much we are, we can use to the recycling, that will be dictated by the product that goes into the container. So. And our manufacturing process does not create any fumes or the, or if anything for the air pollution like that, we don't use any chimneys or any furnace that's to melt the plastic, it's all sophisticated, well-established manufacturing machine has been done, and mainly, for example, this ferro-matic from China, from U.S. is well-established machinery that produce, all the Coke bottles has to be produced in the ferro-matic machine. That's, if you produce the preform of the ferro-matic, then the Coca-Cola and Pepsi is giving license to produce outside the world. So it's all, that's kind of machine we are targeting to buy for the usage. So, and also the water pollution, we are not creating any water pollution, we need to use water for cooling, but it's a recycling thing, we put in the tank, it enters into the machine, then they're back to the chiller, and again, it's a cycling. We, I'm not going to discharge any water on the sea wage. So that's all, if you have any question, you can ask.
Terry was going to make, were you making any comments at all, Terry, as well?
That's a bit on.
Okay.
Okay, all right, at this time...
Questions from the board?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I know.
Example? Okay. We'll just get back, we can go in order of the sign-in.
Okay.
Are you on, any questions, or just any questions from the board?
To the applicant?
I had a question.
They're gonna have, he's gonna go, he's gonna go in order of the people that have signed in. Typically, questions, typically in a hearing like this, you try to limit to some degree a back and forth in an ongoing conversation. So the best way to do it would be when someone's giving their statements, if they have questions, they would pose those questions, and perhaps the applicant would have an opportunity at the end to respond, rather than have an ongoing back and forth throughout the entirety of the hearing. Okay?
So first up, is it Kathleen, Ryan, or?
Ryan.
Ryan.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So when you talk about the plastic, that it's all recycled, you use recycled plastic?
Yeah.
And then, when I think of recycled plastic as John Q. Blublock, is I think of the stuff we throw in our bin, and where you, you know, how it's supposed to have all the numbers and recycle it. Is that what you're using, or are you picking up new things that are, you're gonna recycle plastic, that I'm new to this whole process?
So it's a, it's a completely a new process, that the country has to have a good recycling plan for recycling, earlier days, recycling, everything was dumped in a container and sent to China to recycle the plastic until two thousand three from United States. After two thousand three, it was completely banned by United, the recycling thing was completed because China has doubled that thing, and they don't want anymore, so you need to have, the first thing is you need to recycle the material, the people who use it, they put it in the garbage, right? And you need to have a recycling, there's a steel, there's a good recycling facility in the upstates, in Syracuse, and those people are doing already recycling thing, they recycle the steels. But moreover, the way the recycling for the plastic is not considered in New York is a thing, that if you don't have a demand to reuse the thing. If you have, if you have, if anybody comes and puts a facility to have it, create a demand, then everybody will focus on recycling it. It's not only I'm going to use only PP, it's a food grade PP. And no HDP, LDPE, LLD, nothing. I'm going to use only three components, that is polypropylene and PET, PET is a pet bottle, drinking water bottle. So once you throw, you have to wash it, hot water wash, so that's, you need to have well-established facility, and there should be a, we call it a hundred PPM parts per million, it should be like pet bottle, there should not be any stickers, any label inside the thing, then you can use it. It's a massive process for recycling, but the country has to implement those processes.
Need United States to do that.
Yeah, but the recycling material is already available in the United States, so many states are recycling those things.
Okay. Next would be Lourdes Vera?
Yeah. And so I will just read my comment.
Can you give address as well?
Yeah, so I'm Dr. Lourdes Vera, I live at one six seven Herkimer Street in Buffalo, New York. My mother's family has called Lockport home for five generations, and so I have a personal investment in the well-being of this community. And my expertise is in environmental health, my PhD is in sociology with a concentration in environmental health, and I'm very concerned about the board subsidizing the plant. And this is because especially they, in their Q and A and information they sent out, they said that they would be processing, creating PVC pipes, and from PVC, that processing emits carcinogens, and they said there was no heating, but going through the documents and the process, there is heating of this material, and I'm especially concerned about the workers. Because the workers, even if there are no air emissions, which I would like to know more about this process, because usually there are, they are exposed, would be exposed to dioxin, which is carcinogenic, and then a lot of times there are polychlorinated biphenols, if you've heard of those PCBs, that are also, end up in PVC because they're used to coat wiring. So that is also dangerous, and for high voltage cables. So this especially concerns me because we know Eighteen Mile Creek is a super fun site, and that includes dioxin and PCBs that the EPA is cleaning up. So do we want more? Do we potentially want, especially these workers, to be exposed? And, you know, in addition to Eighteen Mile Creek, and this is especially important to me because my grandmother passed away two years ago from pancreatic cancer, she lived here all her life, and pancreatic cancer especially is linked to these emissions. So, and I know that they used to eliminate by old cream. I'm also concerned because the plant would be to the west of town, and if there are air emissions, then those would be carried over, because we also know that the dominant wind direction comes from the west. I also do not trust the information that we are receiving from the company because they distributed a fake summary of a peer-reviewed article to at least one reporter. So I found, you know, I received this document, the summary of an article that they say is called "Life Cycle Assessment of Commodity Plastic Pipes," and so I tried to find it in the volume and the issue of the journal, of a well-reputed journal, Environmental Science and Technology, and I couldn't find it. And then, and I'm a researcher, I looked at the journal, it's, it wasn't there. So, and then I ran the summary through Chat GPT detector, and it was written by AI. Seventy-five, or seventy-two percent of it was at least written by AI. So I do not trust this company and this information that they're distributing. Also, it's not a good economic decision. The, there's an economist at UB who submitted a public comment, did an analysis, and found that this could actually cost of a net deficit of one to three million dollars when you take into account all of the externalities. And I urge you to look beyond the sustainable narrative. A lot of mainstream environmentalists look at the big picture, but we're looking at the local picture here, we're looking at the health of citizens in Lockport, the workers, and the economy.
All right, thank you, nice. Thanks for the comment, and thank you for your letter as well. Let's hold up on the comments related to her questions, we'll move to the next person.
That's Nicole O'Connor, evidence.
Nicole, welcome back, I live at seven nine O'Connor, Buffalo, New York. I am against the building of this plant. I think with the New York State, we've seen initiatives to drastically curb the impact of plastic in our communities, and I stand with progress in that way.
Nick Gordon?
No, Thomas.
You do? Catherine? Niagara Shore Drive, Tonawanda?
Hi, I'm Catherine, and thank you for having us. I worked in Buffalo City Hall for a while, and I gotta say, in the common council, we would be stoked to hear of this many people at eight a.m. on a Friday. So really, just honestly, in the process of civic debate, I guess my comment, my question would be, to all of us, and to the factory owner, you know, or the CAC, the CAC company, you know, just going back to basics, what information are we basing this on? If it really isn't the best economic decision of Lockport, you know, I really, really encourage you to check Dr. Lourdes's account with the economist at UB, he's wonderful. And please, please, look at the study that was submitted. No offense, I'm also a seventh grade teacher, so I see my students pull up stuff all the time, and I don't think people know that when you use Chat GPT, it hallucinates, is what it's called, when it makes up facts and data. But please, check it yourself, you can check Chat GPT runner, the article, when we researched it, when she researched it, she did a very thorough, fantastic job, it's a professional researcher, looking for this information. We could not find the actual information that was cited. So please, before you make a decision, we really encourage you, please look at the article, see if you can find the article that they submitted, look for those facts. And please, talk to the economist, learn more about that negative impact that it has, because he also is very experienced, very thorough, and these are professionals, they're not mucking people, hugging your trees. We're teachers, we're artists, we're people that really care and are willing to listen also. So thank you.
James, is it Toby?
Yeah, James Colvin, Tonawanda, New York. I concur with the previous statements.
Paul, CJ, anything?
Well, Mr. Sai, I'm just here as an observer, and as time to learn more about the project. No public comment.
David, is it Durazia?
No, no comments.
Okay. Margot Valenti?
Yes, hi, everyone. I got to the bottom of the list very quickly.
Still more after.
So I'm Margot, I'm the legal director with Buffalo Niagara Waterkeeper, and I just wanted to come here today and talk to you a little bit about what we know about the plastics in our area, and I actually brought some, the little plastic pellets you was describing, they're called nurdles. The problem with nurdles is that they get everywhere, so I brought you some to look at what they are. These are from Grant Park in North Tonawanda, and those are just samples. So the nurdles get picked up importantly in the wind, and they will shift in the wind direction, and they blow into everything, they end up in the waterways, and they end up becoming microplastics, they never break down. So at our shoreline sweep this year, you may know that we do a shoreline sweep every morning, or every morning, oh my gosh, my life would be over. Every spring, we do a shoreline sweep. So this year, we sent out on a Monday cleanup for Earth Day, we picked up eighteen thousand nine hundred and twenty pounds of trash, and that included four thousand two hundred and thirty-four plastic food wrappers, and two hundred and sixty, two thousand six hundred and fifty-eight plastic bottles, but holistically of those eighteen thousand pounds, eighty percent of it was plastic. So we know that we have a plastic problem, we know that the plastic is ending up in the waterways, and so because of this, New York State has been actively curbing plastic, and that's kind of our point here, is should you be, should you be, that's my question, subsidizing a company that the state is actively phasing out. We have the poly styrene ban, we have the plastic bag ban, New York State's been actively working on, we call it EPR, Extended Producer Responsibility, but it's a Packaging Reduction Act, in order to lessen the state's plastic use. New York State has not passed this yet, but it's been actively pursued in Albany for years, it got a ton of folks co-sponsors this session, so it will be back. Per the PCBs, it's also important to note that the Niagara River is the highest-class drinking water that you can have, and actually, under the New York State policy documents, there are no additional loadings of PCBs allowed into the Niagara River, parked up, there just aren't. There just aren't. Um, so we certainly don't want to put ourselves in a place where we encourage that to happen. We mentioned that there's no plastic pollution, but that's why I brought the nurdles. We know that there's gonna be plastic pollution. It's just inevitable with this kind of manufacturing. Um, and then I did also bring you one other little thing to look at. So I submitted this in my comments, but this is a report from 2018 from the University of Michigan. And I highlighted for you just the most important table. Um, this shows that in general, Great Lakes Restoration Initiative dollars have a three to one return on investment. But in Erie and Niagara Counties, they actually have a four dollar and two cents return on investment, and that includes in new job creation. And so I bring this just by way of comparison to say that there are other opportunities. It doesn't necessarily have to be this opportunity if it's not the right move at not the right time. And since New York State is phasing out plastics, we know that ecological projects can have a better return on investment. We just kind of wanted to bring all those facts to the board for consideration. So thanks for having us.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
Can't quite, is it last name Sobot?
That's Sobot, from Burlington, Ontario. I'm from Canada. Um, I just want to say hello to all our American friends. And I want to say to the applicant, I represent the Coalition of Concerned Manufacturers in businesses of Canada. And should your application not be successful here, please come to Ontario. We have programs that can encourage your, uh, your recycling facility up there. From what I hear, you're just recycling pellets. There's no chemicals involved in this process. This seems like the perfect recycling opportunity, and it would fit into Ontario's push for sustainability. So we wish you great luck here, but should you not be successful, come up to Ontario.
I skipped over Bill Robbins.
Good morning. I'm Bill Robbins. I'm the president and founder of Rubber Form Recycle Products. And I'm in the recycling business. We, we make products out of your scrap tires and also what you put in the blue bin. Uh, when I heard PVC, big, big red flag. And thank you for your comments. I can't agree more. We actually used to recycle power line insulation from National Grid. And when had PVC was in it, there was a big, major problem and big, major effect on our employees where they have to physically use masks for, uh, for breathing. Uh, I didn't hear anything about PVC. Okay, so is it a PVC plant or is it not a PVC plant? Is it a recycling plant? Is it a manufacturing plant? You know, what is it? Uh, I'm, I'm kind of confused, so. So I'm opposed to PVC. Uh, I could bring PVC to my plant. We're actually doing extrusion. We're not using any PVC. We'll never have PVC in our plant. Very, very, very toxic, very toxic. So, uh, I, we use very, you know, very low VOC in our plant. You can certainly come by and have a tour. You can walk in, it doesn't smell. We don't have any pollution. We have zero waste in our plant, very ecological. So again, uh, we have another problem too, is employees. I can't find enough people. If I find people, uh, we have a problem with people. And we cannot find enough people to work for us. I have twenty job openings. So if anybody's looking for a job, high paid, very high tech, please come, apply at Rubber Form Recycle Products, recyc-, uh, rubberform.com. But thank you very much.
Thank you.
Janet Lettich?
Hi, Janet Lettich. I'm the chair of the local Sierra Club. Uh, we're called the Sierra Club Niagara Group. We cover seven counties of Western New York. We have about two thousand five hundred members. Uh, Sierra Club in general is not real thrilled about putting more plastics into the environment. And I guess my biggest question is, I like the idea of using or recycling plastics. What I don't like is like the end products that, that would be produced, uh, whether they are containers that are, um, you know, for margarine or yogurt or whatever. I know in my own town, in Amherst, New York, I live, you know, right in the village of Williamsville, only ones and twos are recyclable. Three, four, five, and six plastics are trash. They end up going to the landfill. It costs money. They end up eventually degrading after hundreds of years and breaking down, end up in the soil, and eventually, when it rains, it ends up in the waterways. We've got microplastics in the Great Lakes, in the fish in the Great Lakes, and guess what? You're eating about a credit card's worth every month, um, of plastic, in microplastics that come through the food chain and waters, unfortunately. So my concern is the, what's happening with the end products that would be produced? And are those recyclable? Are they all gonna be ones and twos that come out of this, uh, factory that I could recycle and could eventually end up in this resin? You know, in other words, is it all a hundred percent recyclable? Or are they using a resin and creating a product that will end up in the trash? That won't be recyclable. So I guess I'm a little confused about that whole thing. Um, and I, and I think Sierra Club is too. They would like to know more about the details of the end product. And of course, we're looking at alternatives. Uh, we pushed to get rid of plastic food trays for takeout in, uh, you know, town of Amherst and, and in Williamsville. And now it's all compostable. If you're, if you go to a restaurant, you want to take out, it's compostable, and it's made of fibers that will break down easily in compost. So I don't know, really, are we moving in the right direction by putting more plastics into the environment? Shouldn't we be looking towards alternatives? So that's my, our concern and what we would like to see happen. Thank you.
Uh, Nick Zalutsky? Scott Gray?
Ward Three. I live next to the plant. Uh, we are for the plant. City Republican Committee wants there, the neighbors want them. Behind the garage for the county. The arguments against plastic are flawed. They fail to link plastic injection molding process to the plastic lying around the ground for the past thirty years. This is a clean process. They are against plastics in general. They are government-sponsored people funded to protest against America. Thank you.
Where is the money? I didn't get any money. I'm a volunteer here.
The next is Tom.
Let's keep the comments down.
The Tom Casey or Kerry Chestnut?
Tom. Uh, I'm Tom. Are you calling my name?
Yeah, I am.
Okay. Oh, I, I didn't know we'd be speaking, but I'll, I'll say something. Um, you know, I'm one of the government-sponsored citizens of Lockport here. Um, yeah, yeah. Um, I, I grew up in Lockport. I went to Lockport High School. Um, my daughter, when her mom lived right over where the plant will be put in, so, uh, and, um, my daughter, she used to live there for a number of years. Now they live in a different spot. But, you know, when, when you kind of, I, I don't know if we can address questions to specific people, but I am curious who is making the deci-, I don't know how this stuff works. Who's making the decision on whether or not this will happen? Is it these individuals at this table right here?
Correct.
Okay. So I would implore all of you to think about the fact that a child growing up in that spot or downwind of that spot could potentially have long-term health risks that they may have to experience for the rest of their lives. Not just as a result of, of plastics lying in the ground or getting into the water, things like that. But as, uh, I haven't really heard much, other than some of the initial comments, um, of the chemical processes that will produce chemicals that will go into the air. And that's going to happen. It's gonna happen. And, um, I, I would really, really hope that you consider that fact and think about the families, the people who live in that area, what they may have to go through later in their life. I know, uh, uh, you know, that the other side of that is, is getting jobs, all that. There's, I believe, twenty jobs potentially? Well, there's twenty jobs over there that those people can have right now. Uh, so, I mean, it, the, the cost benefit analysis, to me, doesn't make any sense. And one thing I think Ted is also very important here to consider is, you know, you have to be sure that someone coming in, bringing this type of operation into your town, that if there are detrimental effects, if there are risks, if there are health problems, if there's issues with, uh, uh, the process that, that pop up, that there is honesty, transparency, um, in that process so that it can be regulated appropriately, right? If there is too much pollutant getting into the air, getting into the water systems, you have to be able to oversee that, um, to address it effectively. And one thing that was brought up by, um, Dr. Lourdes, I'm sorry, I, I don't remember everyone's name. Um, but, but that was brought up, and I think it was very interesting, is the fact that a, I'm a scientist too, and, and the fact that, uh, Chat GPT was used to produce a paper that was circulated around to people. To me, I feel like, you know, you're, you're, you're hoping that this person coming in is going to be transparent and open about their process and be upfront about it. That's a non-starter. You know, if someone's using, I don't know how familiar, uh, familiar you are with Chat GPT, um, but basically, it's, it's just an AI tool that you can just generate, you know, text. Just type into a few prompts in it. It's like Google, but it generates full narratives, papers. And it's a real problem. Now, as a scientist, if I saw someone generating a paper with Chat GPT, done. They should be blacklisted from the scientific community. We would never consider a single thing they ever said again as having any merit or basis in reality. It'd be over. And to me, that's what's happened here, you know? And I don't know if you want to address that, because, you know, I, I, I thought it was very interesting, the reaction when that was happening, and maybe I'm being too confrontational, I don't care. Um, the thing about this is that, that's a non-starter. That's someone, that is something you cannot trust long-term to be transparent about the effects that are going to, you know, affect the people of this town. And those are human beings over there. That, they, they will experience, um, long-term health effects if there are, you know, chemicals put into the air over there. That is probably gonna happen. Um, it's, it's already happening, but that's just one more thing added to the pot. I, I don't know. I don't know if there's allowed to be any conversation or anything. But, you know, I hope that the people at this table right here consider that because it's, it's a very real thing, and you shouldn't just miss it. And to me, the Chat GPT thing, that's a non-starter. It should just be tossed out wholesale. There's, you don't need to know anything more than that. And hell, that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Jake Robbins?
Um, I certainly agree with everyone against the decision.
Okay.
Can I just add a few concluding remarks? Uh, I simply wanted to say that we were delighted with the opportunity to speak to local residents about what we have planned for this facility. Personally, I think a world without plastics is unrealistic. The features of all plastic food containers, they can't be replicated by a fiber-type product. Uh, plastics, nobody loves plastics, but they're incredibly useful in terms of transparency, um, moisture resistance, lightweight, and low cost. You're not gonna find water in glass bottles and wax paper wrapped food packaging. Only they go so far. We, we are launching with products that are going to be showing up in wagons and tops, regardless of whether we make them or not. If we do not make them, they will be made in the Middle East, from what I understand, particularly Turkey, Saudi Arabia, and Dubai. So they're still gonna be in the grocery store because they are incredibly useful. As Duro said, we are creating a demand for used plastics of the type that he will produce so that they will be taken out of the environment. So we are not adding more plastic. We are replacing plastic that comes from overseas, and we are creating a demand for recycling of plastics. Believe us or not, when we say that we are not generating air pollution or fumes, that we are not discharging into waters, and you can create straw men and knock them down to say how we have all these polluted impacts, but it's just not there. We're subject to regulation by the D E C, the U S D P A, and they will police us. So there's that to deal with. In terms of worker safety, we're subject to the New York Department of Labor and OSHA. We have those protections as well. So these, these crisis scenarios are overblown. I was expecting to hear the one about the railroad cars in Ohio and liquid chemicals. We're not importing liquid chemicals. We're not a chemical man. We're simply melting plastic into shapes that are gonna be in the grocery store, whether we produce them or not. So I'm personally excited, frankly, for the opportunity to bring jobs in manufacturing that are currently overseas and bring them back to the United States. Um, I think it's a great opportunity. Finally, let me say, um, the Lockport I D A has what we, who would hope to be our neighbor, Bison Bag, their own plastic manufacturer. I don't know a lot of history about Bison Bag, but I know they've got a substantial capital investment. They've created, I believe, nearly a hundred jobs there for local residents. I'm glad those jobs are created. I'm glad they're there to support people. Um, and so we would appreciate your consideration of sponsoring this new launch of a, of a, the first, of this family's industry in the United States so we can proceed with this project and make it happen.
All right. Um, at this time, we're gonna call the public hearing to a close. Um, I would like to let everyone know in advance that, you know, in light of all the information that we've received, you know, both through letters, emails, and then public comment today, we will not be making a decision today. We would like to, um, as a board, review all of this information to make sure that we get this decision right.
I just left out one thing, just for the record, and I'll probably be the one creating the record. So, um, to date, there were thirteen correspondences received. All of those were shared with the board, both electronically, but also in your day-of package. So, um, there may be some that were received after four o'clock yesterday. I'll obviously copy and share those with you and make sure they're part of the public record. But, um, that's where we stand so far.
Um, well, you've closed the public hearing, which brings to a certain portion, our morning, to a conclusion, at least the morning for many of you. Certainly welcome to stay. But there is a business meeting that the I D A will be conducting shortly thereafter. I would recommend we just take a short adjournment. For those that want to leave, can leave, and then we can get on with your business meeting.
Sounds good. Thank you.
I just have a question I wanted to report right now. If you're burning plastic, you know, that process is the reason.
Yeah.
... throughout the region.
Stan?
I don't know what the actual.
Yeah, I'm sure you're staying.
Oh, yes, yes. I don't know what the actual source is.
Is it going? At some point, we'll get to an executive session, but not for a little bit.
All right, it is eight fifty four. Callers ready to meet to order. Yep, and you're, and I guess you have the minutes from June eighth meeting. If you look it over, I'll take a motion to approve those.
I'll make that motion.
Also, Bob, I can make carry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Now, just before we do this, do, I think it probably makes sense, Bob, for you to give today's report. You look like you're ready. And then we do the vote to replace Kristin? Yeah, okay. So Todd, pardon my order. Let's do, let's do the vote at number three. And sorry for the confusion.
Oh, yeah.
Bob, I'll cover the financial statements.
Okay.
Statement of cash transactions.
It's in the way at the end.
Is that much proper? That was for the final round?
Correct. Yeah, that was a bit of a surprise in the sense that we know there was gonna be an opportunity to have a new farm, given she the win, but there obviously was.
On the disbursement, the normal effects of the pound, pound for travel and meetings, normal Toshiba bill, WNYSTAR, that's...
Commercial realtors. Summer meeting, yeah.
And then our net number recorded of a hundred dollars. So, total, forty-nine point five. If we go to the balance sheet, oops, the income statement, you'll see the same income at the top and the expenses, the Toshiba, the management fee, the accountant and attorney fees that show up there.
Cordially, yes.
The equipment checks for it. Meeting expense for Tom and the hundred dollars for the electrical bill. So, total expense for the month of thirteen-two-hundred. And then if we go to the balance sheet, you'll see we have one-hundred ninety-sixty-nine sixty in the checking account, eighteen-thirty-two-five-sixty-six in the savings account, total assets of twenty-nine-four-five-seven-sixty-three. The accounts payable is the attorney and the accountant for the month. We have our two bonds and the accrued liabilities for the litigation at two-fifty. And then the fund, our total fund balance of sixteen-twenty-six-zero-forty-one. And then you'll see the repeat of the total liability and fund balance. And that is the report for July. So, I'll take a motion to approve the financial statements as presented by Bob. All right. Motion by Kristen, second by Janine. All in favor?
It was me.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I got it.
Got it. So, motion by Darlene, second by Janine. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Invoice and bills. Okay, our bills for July, that we would like to pay, the monthly contract, and credit card for the town of Lockport of forty-four thirty-six, Tom's travel by eighty-eight, Toshiba bill, and then we, the two accountant and lawyer numbers that I mentioned before. And then the major is that, so you notice of the public room. So, for July, text from you, twelve thousand ninety. And I would like to make a motion to pay it. All right. Motion by Bob.
Aye.
Second by Kristen. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And as you know, Bob had submitted his resignation as the treasurer. So, he's still remaining on the board. He's resigning as the treasurer. And Kristen has stepped up to take his place as the treasurer. So, how do we do this, Tom? We just take a vote to...
Appoint Kristen.
Appoint Kristen as the new treasurer. You want individual or just all, you know?
A motion and second first.
All right. Motion by Darlene, second by Janine to...
You might voice, voice vote or...
You don't, I don't think you need it.
Okay. To implement Kristen as the new treasurer. All in favor?
Aye.
Kristen recuses.
Okay.
All right. Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on, administrative director.
Yeah, handful of items, and I probably will have something for exec. But all of you are familiar with the fact that the Aviant, probably one building, is for sale. Just by way of update, the two silos are down. I do see activity of equipment in the building being moved out. I did speak to an interested party that has been in the building and notes that there's still quite a bit of cleanup left to be done. The one entity that I had been dealing with through a nondisclosure unfortunately has chosen not to bid on it and doesn't any longer have interest in our five acres, which is obviously disappointing. But I have certainly talked to a couple other entities that have had questions about the building and one other individual in our park itself. So, that's where that stands. It, it's not direct to us, but obviously, the Lockport GM plant is important to us. A portion of it falls into town. You may have read within the last month or so, there's been a leadership change, both the Lockport plant and the Towne-Lawn Engine Plant, more notably to us, the Component Holdings Plant. That's only difficult, because I've often found it challenging to get, you know, an established relationship, which we had with the previous plant manager. But I plan to work with Heather Peck from the city to try to jointly begin to establish a relationship with the new, new leadership. On the grant side, we have submitted our first reimbursement for the rail trail phase two. The one thing I would point you to that we don't need to vote on today, but it's in your packet and refers to as LaserFISH and their modern document management system. I may have begun to reference that I, I think it would be advantageous for us to take advantage of document management software. I did have a presentation, and I may have shared some of that with you, from Toshiba, although it's not their product, it's DocuWare, or somebody else's national program. The town of Lockport, most notably the town clerk's office, uses LaserFISH as their document management system. I, I think it only makes sense that if we give serious consideration to that, which I'd like us to, that we, for all intents and purposes, try and go with LaserFISH. There'd be some both economic, but also support benefits. I don't have a price yet. It will be less expensive because of that existing town relationship. What Maureen and I have to do, we just didn't have time to do, is to go through and say, "Look, here's our files. These are the ones that we envision would be coming over" and get a price strictly for that transfer process. The other prices will not be dictated on it. So, I'm gonna continue to move forward with getting a final proposal, both in terms of data transfer, for lack of a better word, and then what that, you know, monthly support would be. But it's, I mean, it definitely would not be even five grand a year. I think in our case, well, one, it's gonna frankly force us to be as disciplined as possible about our own record storage. And, you know, in some cases, we really are. In some cases, especially historically, eh, maybe, you know, it's, it's out there somewhere, but is it electronically? Is it in the paper file? Where is it really? But as you know, it will help us also going forward, because we have both that historic relationship with the company, i.e., pilot, pilot documents and so on. But then we typically have a fifteen-year relationship going forward. Where's your insurance forms? Where's your jobs report? And that can all be facilitated through the document management. Probably selfishly, the one thing I like the most is it uses that optical recognition. So, a lot of times, you know, we'll sit around and say, "Remember, we chose to extend Commerce Drive." And then we'll sit there and we'll say, "Yeah, I know we did, and someone wanted a piece of information." And I have to literally sit there and say, "Twenty, twenty-one. Okay, I'm gonna start with twenty-one and start to look through our minutes and so on." In this case, with document management, I'll type in Commerce Drive extension, and anything related to that pops up. But I would say for me, the number one reason I'm interested in is really just forcing us to be disciplined about having everything as in order as it possibly can be. And it just, you know, isn't that the case right now. But I'll definitely get you a price, but...
I have two cents on this? Um, just two, just two, maybe two. Although we, actually, my company, we implemented DocuWare through Toshiba, oh, years ago. And having said that, I think it makes a lot of sense that you're looking at partnering with the town of Lockport on something they already use. But everything you said, I back up. It's easier to find things and takes so much less time to, you know? I mean, when I have to get things together for our audit, it's all through email and send it off.
Will the Paris filing enter?
It will in terms of the gathering of the data. That will become a lot more automated process. It certainly doesn't connect with Paris. But, yeah, right now, that's a very manual process. "Hey, we still didn't receive your jobs report, you know? Can you please follow through?" or those kind of a thing. But, yeah. Well, I thought I had... Oh, and then the other thing, I don't have it on my, um, well, I guess I'm, I'm good until we get to an executive session. I think that's it. Other than, I know what I was gonna mention, that just purely FYI, rest is today and tomorrow off, out of the office with kids and grandkids in town. So, don't look for minutes until Monday, and especially for Janine. Well, maybe, maybe there'll be time for me to bang them out, but... And we'll certainly pull together the public record by early next week as well, just so that's squared away, but...
All right. Thank you, Tom. And moving on to attorney's report, Tom?
I don't have anything other than, I'd ask for an executive session at the end of the meeting to, to talk about your ongoing litigation and just for a general consultation with your counsel.
Okay. Sounds good. Any old business? Any new business? All right. At this time, I'll ask for a motion to move into executive session for consultation with attorney.
This one too already?
All right, we're back.
Yeah, I would have to call in for that.
The next meeting? Oh, wow. We were gonna take a vote on this.
Well, we can reschedule it.
Reschedule it, right?
On my calendar.
I'm gonna, I gotta run. I really have to run.
Why don't you guys talk about possibly doing a reschedule?
I'll send a doodle.
If it works for people.
Following week wouldn't work to me, obviously.
We're actually considering...
I'm in early the next two weeks, that's it.
You know, especially considering the five that work or six that are here today, being part of the hearing and stuff, it'd be good to have the majority of you guys voting on what the ultimate outcome is, rather than losing some and bringing in.
I'll send a doodle.
All right, we'll take a motion then in the meeting.
I'll take, I'll make a motion.
Darlene makes one, and Carrie?
Have a great day.
Next.
I'll do August third.
What day of the week is that?
The Thursday.
Oh, it's Thursday, just Thursday before.
Yeah, I don't think August is a problem for me either.
Yeah, that's fine for me.
Did you get in a joint, Darlene and Newell?
Or Carrie, I'm sorry. Darlene and Carrie. I need to jump on.